We are now in open session and I would like to call this meeting of the Wauwatosa School Board to order with a moment of silent reflection. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
He is excused, he will be here a little later.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber?
Here. I would like to read a statement, please. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. Is there anyone here who would like to comment on a non-agenda item at this time? If so, please come to the microphone and give your name and address. Seeing none, if we could, excuse me. Okay, thank you.
Hello, Chris Weber, 11410, West Wisconsin. I was here a couple of weeks ago with my idea of putting a billboard up along Highway 45 and since then I did call by West High School. I did call one of my two older people.
Mr. Burschel, possibly?
No. Anyway, it'll come to me. District 3, and Jackie J. And Jackie said that she thought that was, sounded interesting to her and she wouldn't have a problem with it, but you know, it wasn't a city item as opposed to a school item. And I actually did call and talk with Peter Donigan, who's an older person and running for mayor, and he thought the idea sounded really interesting and he thought it was a really good idea, but it doesn't really adhere to him per se, but I looked into it and so far a couple of people think it's an interesting idea and I did read in the Tulsa newspaper last week how Tulsa West is trying to raise $90,000 for their new theater or upgrade or something like that and well, there's a good start for it if something like that would ever go forward, so, just my update.
Thank you. You are back at any time with comment. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Seeing none, if we could proceed. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda at this time?
So moved.
And, and is there a second?
Second.
Sharon?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone of the Board that would like to accept separate action on a particular item?
Yes, I'd like to take separate action on the Buildings and Grounds item.
And that is? What is, which one is that? You said Buildings and Grounds.
The second item about the renovation of the gym at Fisher.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has an objection? If not, can we take that first, please? Do you wish to speak to that?
I do. The reason I asked for a separate action on this, it's a project I support, but it's an expense of $815,000 to the district and I just personally think that when we're spending that sum of money, it should be done out in the open and on the record. I don't meant that it's being hidden here, but I think that expenses that large should be voted on separately. And perhaps Dr. Erdl could just explain the project briefly and the benefits to the district.
The continued renovation of this building, the Fisher Building, that it started off with the Montessori classrooms and now has moved into the area where the rec department will be moved over and the gymnasium will be renovated back into usable space, so that will be used by the rec department as well as students in this building. The process is that there were bids taken and there is a selected general contractor that is being recommended to the Board. And the project will begin, I'm assuming, shortly after approval.
Yes, Mrs. Randall?
I guess I would just add, so that people aren't concerned that we don't know what we're voting on, we have had several presentations on this, the last one being extremely comprehensive, so this is the final step in a process that's been before the Board before.
Dr. Earl, may I ask you, would you mind just reviewing exactly what this covers? It's not just gym renovation, it's the area that the gym formerly was, but it will be projected for other uses, and would you mind just clearing that up?
The one area on the far east side will be where the rec department offices will be moved to, and then the rec department will have access to this gym outside of the times that students will be using it for school. And the area that is now the trade school will be moved into classrooms as well, just movement of a couple of walls, movement of one wall and the addition of another one. Also, a big part of it is the heating and air conditioning, which they have run their lifecycle and needed to be replaced anyway, so that is being done as well.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak to this? If not, may we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes. The motion passes, thank you. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Is there any community comment on the consent agenda, please? And I apologize if someone wishes to speak to the item that we just approved, that is my error, so I will respectfully recognize any comments that you might have on that also. Seeing none, a roll call on the consent agenda, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Mielefeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes. Thank you. Recognitions, please. We would begin with Mr. Croner?
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Students from Longfellow Middle School have won Scholastic Writing Regional Awards. Natalie Klein, Molly Devine, Henry Lynch, and Joey Johnson, all eighth graders, received honorable mentions for their writing. They will be invited to an award ceremony on May 21st at the Milwaukee Repertory Theater. The event is run by Still Waters Collective and the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards. Stephen Zing Scheim is a student's ELA teacher, English Language Arts. Founded in 1923, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards are the oldest, longest-running, most prestigious recognition program for creative teenagers in the United States in grades seven through 12 from across the country.
The Herb Cole Educational Foundation has named Wauwatosa West High School senior, Katherine Adams, as a 2012 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Excellence Scholarship recipient, and Eisenhower fourth grade teacher Nancy Tarian as recipients of the 2012 Herb Cole Educational Foundation Fellowship Award. Excellence scholarships in the amount of $1,000 are awarded each year to 100 graduating high school students. Scholarship recipients are chosen for their demonstrated academic potential, outstanding leadership, citizenship, community service, integrity, and other special talents. Each fellow's school will also receive a $1,000 grant. Each year, the Cole Foundation awards fellowship awards to teachers and excellence and initiative scholarships to students. Senator Cole will attend regional recognition lunches honoring the recipients and present these awards.
On March 5th, nine staff members are recognized as employees with 25 years of service to the district. This year's honorees are Brian Burkard, Buildings and Grounds, Doreen Foer, River Hills, Diana Mater, Grade 2 at Wilson, Kathy Meyer, Grade 2 at McKinley, Edith Schaffner, Grade 5 at McKinley, Kristy Schweiss, Viad at Longfellow, Ann Whitman, and Pam Tenai, Special Education at West, Michael Trice, Head Custodian at Roosevelt, and Betty Yentz, Special Education at Jefferson.
Mrs. Fee, would you read the next one, please?
The Regional Spelling Bee was held in February at the CISA One Agency. Audrey Niva, a sixth grader from Longfellow Middle School, placed first and will represent the region at the Badger State Spelling Bee later this month. In addition to Audrey, the other Wauwatosa students who competed in the regional competition and placed in the top 10 included Whitman Middle School eighth grader Katie Dickey, who placed fourth, and Matthew Meisinger, a fifth grader from Roosevelt Elementary School, who placed seventh. Henry Wallenstein, fifth grade, Jefferson Elementary School, and Alec Lau, eighth grade, Whitman Middle School, also participated in the Regional Spelling Bee.
Thank you. If I could comment just a moment on several of these. Dr. Earl, do you know this first item that was recognized that Mr. Croner read, have we participated in that in the past? Were there any students that were recognized? I cannot remember any, and I think this is so worthy.
I don't know, but I can look into it and find out.
It would be good, because this is just a very kind acknowledgement. The spelling bee is always a highlight of the school year for me. When I see these young people, fifth through eighth graders, spelling, and let me tell you, the words were hard this year, and they are, it's a spelling bee that includes both public and private schools, and really, an exciting evening. When the young people lose its, or misspell a word is a better word, it's so respectful how they stop and listen to the word that is correctly spelt for them. And you can see the nervousness in them, but they are doing a wonderful job, and it's a wonderful thing, so anyone that's time, please try to attend those. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on these items? Thank you. Dr. Earl, Superintendent's report?
Tonight, we have with us Jennifer Wilson, who is with the Forest Exploration Center and has written the planning grant, and what we're presenting to you tonight is the planning grant for that charter school. The next step would be approval at the following meeting, but Jennifer is here to share some information and answer questions.
Good evening, everyone. John G. sends his regards. You had the pleasure of hearing this presentation a couple of weeks ago. He's meeting Larry Rosenstock in California with the Executive Director of ITAC High, which is one of the schools that are modeling now, so he sends his best to you. And I'm Jennifer Wilson, and this is the building consultant. And with me is Danny Goldberg, who is a former MPS School Board Director and Executive Director of Diversity Scholars, and he's also on the planning committee. So in your packet, you receive the highlights of the grant and a draft of the grant, too. It's a very dense, long document, so we won't go through all 20 pages of that, but I would like to comment just on a few highlights from that. And I think what's most exciting about the potential of this school is that it's very rare for such strong community support to come together with the school district and lead such an initiative. And we seek to become one of the highest performing charter schools in the state, and I think with the partnerships that we have along with the Wauwatosa School District, that we can do just that. And we also have a very strong commitment to diversity, to STEM, and ensuring that this is open to all students in the district, as well as establishing relationships with students from Milwaukee through the open enrollment process. So those are some of the highlights that I think make it a very exciting initiative, and I'd love to answer any questions you may have about the draft of the grant.
When do you expect, I'm sorry, I apologize, I was not at the meeting that you presented last time, so I have a lot of questions, but not this evening. When do you expect that this might start? The process would begin after the grant is approved, of course, right?
Right, that's the first step. So April 16th is the due date for the grant, and then after that, grants are awarded in August, and then we have a year to 18 months to open the school and be good work on that. So we're looking at fall 2013 as an opening date.
It's exciting for me to see that so many students will have the opportunity, not just from Wauwatosa, but the surrounding areas. It's wonderful for the young people.
We have a very strong commitment to that, and the other thing I think is very exciting is the way Dr. Earl put it was, it's going to be a lab school, so it's the facility and the school are open to all students in the district and to all teachers to come and learn, so when we have professional development, we hope that we get to share all of that with all teachers.
In how large area? Will it be used, but how much of the land?
The land is 67 acres, 57 acres of which are forest, and we're really seeking to have a minimal impact on the land to retain the feel of the forest, so maybe a 30,000 square foot building or campus of smaller buildings. We're working with a really phenomenal group of architects called Cabalo Ashatko. They've designed the Urban Ecology Center, the Aldo Leopold Center, and other places like that, so they're very talented at doing that, so having it blend in to the forest is important.
I consider this a dream. How long have you been looking at this and planning? Because I've heard, oh, thoughts about this for a couple of years now, so how long has this actually been looked at?
That's a very good point. The Forest Exploration Center Board has been in existence for 10 years, and initially, their initial concept was a forestry museum, and feasibility studies showed that just a static museum about forestry wasn't really sustainable for the area, and then when John G. was hired as Executive Director in the fall, late winter, he brought the idea forward of having a charter school, and that gave brand-new energy to the entire project, and everyone's just really rallied around that vision as a way to really make it a vital place for the community.
That's really moved it ahead?
Very much so, yeah, this community support, I've never seen anything like it, and I've consulted with many charter school planning committees.
There's wildlife over there.
Yes.
Will that be respected and possibly enhanced?
Our whole goal is to have the students and everyone associated with the center and the school become stewards, and stewardship is essential value, and stewardship means caring for and taking care of, so yes, absolutely, that's our number-one priority and goal, is to cohabitate with and not harm in any way.
How about the butterfly migration?
Yeah, I know, John G., he did speak with the butterfly lady, as she's known, so that will definitely be taken into consideration. And one of the things we noticed, too, is some of us had the opportunity to go on a tour of the land, and what we noticed was there were a lot of community members really taking part there, so our goal is to use a social engagement, community engagement model, and have people feel as if they can be part of it and welcome there, versus creating something that becomes cordoned off and not for use by everyone who should be able to enjoy the forest.
Young people mostly?
Yes.
Thank you. Board members, further questions or comments? Yes, please, Mrs. Randall first?
Thank you. I read this all with great interest and excitement. There's one little detail that I have a question on that's a little different from our existing charter schools, and that is an effort to provide transportation for students from Milwaukee. So I just wondered a little bit more about that. We have explored busing here in Tulsa before and found that if the public schools do provide transportation, we also have to provide it to the private schools as well. So I'm not sure what you're thinking of, what arrangement you're thinking of for transportation.
That's a really good question. We put that in there in order to address the issue of how will we get students from Milwaukee to be able to participate in an equitable way if they're geographically a little farther out. So initially, our idea was perhaps there'd be a couple of meeting points where transportation could bring students to and from in the morning and afternoon, so it's just an exploration at this point, so I think that's something we need to investigate further and work directly with the administration to make sure that we aren't doing something that would be in conflict with policy.
Yeah, well, I would absolutely hope we could do that. It's important that, you know, all of us on the perimeters of Milwaukee have some ownership in how that goes, so, thank you. That's all for now.
Mr. Croner?
Thank you. It's nice to have the full proposal. I know last week we just had a snapshot, so this answered a lot of my questions, and I want to ask some questions first about some of the educational things in the proposal, then some organizational things.
Great.
So I recognize a name in here, Dr. James G., and I don't know if he's related to John G., but is related to literacy, and I was, looked up what he did just because that's a focus of our district as well, and I was interested to see that he has done a lot of work recently in computers and how computers relate to literacy and contextual literacy, and how literacy just isn't related to reading and writing, but is applied to whatever field you're in and whatever you're working in. So I learned something, so that was interesting to me, so maybe in our district, we need to look at literacy maybe in a little broader way. The other thing I saw that I didn't expect to see, I think on a retreat, you're going to do some mindful meditation based on John Kabat-Zinn, I didn't expect to see his name in here, that's kind of interesting. I might suggest if you can get the kids to sit quietly for a little bit every day, that would be helpful, and maybe we could think about that in our district, because I know kids get wound up pretty well. The other thing that Dr. G. said that I liked is, he was talking about, I think he didn't use the words critical thinking, but he made this statement about problem-solving, that students not just retain facts, but use facts as tools for problem-solving, and I liked seeing that in there, because a lot of times when I hear people talk about critical thinking, they're talking about science or technology classes, and they seem to emphasize reduce learning facts in favor of critical thinking. But to me, this seems to emphasize that you need all the facts as well as critical thinking, and so I'm glad to see that you're doing both, because, you know, an engineer can't be a good engineer, you might be able to think critically, but if they don't know all the engineering, they're not going to be very successful, so that was good. One of the questions I had is I noticed that when you were talking about evaluating students, you made a statement in there that, I know that you want to be a high-achieving school, but you made a statement that you're going to evaluate students, their achievements based on like populations of students. I wasn't sure what you meant by that. It's on page seven, I think.
It's not the only way to evaluate students, but one way to assess the value that the school provides the community and the particular students is to disaggregate the data about the performance of the students that gives you some kinds of ideas about how those students, that those subsets of students are performing in other places. So it's not just a matter around diversity issues, it's also, you can also do it according to which, how you measure whether students grow, students that are testing, for example, at mid-range, how they grow, students that are coming in testing at a high range, how they grow. So the disaggregation of the data for the purposes of evaluating student performance allows you to see how the approach you're taking works for various different kinds of students depending on how you parse those groups out. In the charter school nomenclature, there's no reason for doing a charter unless you are promising a performance that you would be, that you couldn't get without a charter. This is sort of the, and so how you make those promises of improved performance can be linked up with the students that you, the particular demographics and performance levels of the students that you.
Okay, that makes sense to me. The way I read it in here was that if you had, say, very low-income students from Milwaukee, you were going to compare whether you were successful, whether they did the same or better than low-income students in MPS. I see that that's not really what you mean. You have high expectations, but you're just using it as a tool to see how you're doing.
It's a both-hand. In other words, you're not going to say, this group of students with, has a history, has a cluster of low performance, we don't have to meet high expectations for them, we just have to do better than what they're used to elsewhere. That's not the claim that a charter school makes. Charter school makes two kinds of claims. One is that we can overall increase performance and get increased performance for the subsets as well.
Okay.
So there will, there'll be differentiation according to the individual students. Those students will come from various backgrounds, so you're not just comparing them to a kind of a demographic parallel, you're comparing them across the board also, but the different kinds of information tell you about the performance of the school.
Okay, so I know you used the language, the students will do the same as or better than in several places, and I didn't know if, how that applied to the different subsets.
There's no question that that is not the only measure. You don't just have, when you're talking about, frankly, students that are coming from a district with a history of difficulties around performance, simply outperforming that subset isn't. There are schools in Milwaukee Public Schools that actually address themselves to those same kinds of issues within Milwaukee Public Schools, the highest performing charters, which also win the School of Promise Awards, do both. So there's some models about there to make sure that you're not simply using the poor performance of an aggregate as an excuse for quality education to everyone.
Okay, so from an educational point, it's a really nice proposal. I don't have, I like what you're proposing, it sounds like a really interesting school. From an organizational standpoint, I have some questions. So who is going to be submitting this?
The Forest Exploration Center Board initiated the idea, so the submitter of the planning grant, though, is Wauwatosa School District, is the applicant for the DPI Planning Grant. Was that your question?
So that leads into my main question. It's hugely consequential whether this is an independent charter school or an instrumentality of the district. And the way this is written, I made a table, there are about six things that make you, say you're autonomous, and there are about six things that you put in there that would be applicable to a instrumentality, and so I'd like to know, what is it going to be? What are you applying as?
That's a very good question, and we intentionally left that open. That's something that we want to continue to discuss with the district and negotiate that together. All charter schools are autonomous, they're required by law to have a governance board, whether they're non-instrumentality or instrumentality, that is the essential question, and that's something that we're still willing to have an open discussion about, to see what is going to be the best structure that will best serve the school and the students. So that's why you saw both in there, I think.
So you can apply for a school and not make a decision at this point?
We're going to delay that decision as long as we can in order to continue the conversation, because it's not a finished conversation.
For the purposes of the planning grant, yeah.
Okay.
What can emerge from the planning process, and in the best cases does emerge from the planning process, is literally the determination of what is the best organizational model that delivers the educational and overall vision of the school. So that's really a planning purposes that you would pursue it. In either case, there's a governance.
Yeah, I understand that, but I'm thinking more of the financial differences. For example, if you're an indie, non-instrumentality, you're an independent charter school, if students from Wauwatosa go to the school, then their funds follow them, correct? So if we have eventually 100 students from Wauwatosa go to this school, we could lose a million dollars in funding if it's, say, 10,000 per student. If it's an instrumentality, then the students haven't left the district, they stay in the district and we get the funding.
Either way, it's the dollar amount and how the dollars flow is negotiated and discussed, and whether it's instrumentality or non-instrumentality, we would have to, I mean, part of, part of the issue, the main issue, is to make sure that it is financially sustainable for the district and for the school, so that's the part we're going to have to work through and work with John on it and some others as well, but the finances can be arranged by, if you go per student, or if the district pays for the teachers, or however it can be worked, that's all through negotiations.
One other point is, tricky thing is the, what, the fiscal consequences for the district, you can look at that in a couple of different ways. So long as Wauwatosa School District is the authorizer of the charter, whether it be instrumentality or non-instrumentality, all of the revenues that would be generated by a student enrolled in the district are generated by that student. So, in other words, in a school that is a non-instrumentality of Milwaukee Public School District, where they have non-instrumentalities, they still count for the purposes of the revenues as Milwaukee Public School students. That's not the case with two-hour or independent charter schools, which is not one of the options that we're considering. So there'd be no net loss in terms of the revenue that you're able to generate, that you generate by virtue of enrollments either way. The question is how the money would move and where the money would be taken. But overall, your revenue generating capacity is not changed.
Okay, so I hope during the planning process, the Board can be more involved or at least informed about those options, because that's not clear to me how the funds are going to be divided between the different options.
We can do that, we expect to do that, we also expect to be able to show you comparative real-world examples. You have charter schools here that are instrumentality, so it won't be here, but we can also show you samples of non-instrumentality charter schools and how their finances are arranged and what their fiscal impact on the district.
Okay. Okay. My other question is about the opening date. So, because it wasn't clear from the previous presentation, what exists out at the, now, on the grounds?
There's a forest.
And butterflies.
And butterflies. And so we, we are engaging in fundraising right now. So we have a very aggressive plan, we realize that, but we're fundraising and we hope to open a facility. If the facility were not ready by fall 2013, there's a really great example in Madison called Badger Rock Charter School. They had a similar model in the sense that they were a school in a building with many community partners, and the facility wasn't ready on opening day, so they found another place where the school started. And then this spring, the students moved into the facility. So we will devise contingency plans if the facility's not ready, but there will be a facility, we believe, by fall 2013.
So you plan on opening whether you have new buildings, new buildings out there or not?
We do.
Okay. Because that wasn't clear to me. Because I thought if students are going to start enrolling a year from now, that, well, they're going to have to, right? Then raising ten or twelve million dollars and building, building between now and then seems pretty slim. I mean, maybe you could raise the money, but getting the building built seems pretty slim to me. So, okay, that makes sense to me now. See if I have anything else. I think that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your intent is to raise the twelve million dollars?
Right, the Forest Exploration Center.
That's startup money, right?
Right. That is, that is the task of the Executive Director, John G., so he is hard at work on that right now.
Okay. Good. That's it for me. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I truly believe that the money is going to be raised, because I know there's been talk about, there's been thinking, there's some planning. And I, I think it's going to go. Not thinking, I know it's going to go.
Thank you for your confidence.
Please pass that on to Mr. G.
I will.
No, I really, it's, it's such a great plan, that I believe it'll, it'll be successful.
Share your passion for that. And so far, everyone we've talked to has been caught by the magic of this. So thank you for your thoughts.
Look what we have started already. The land, the butterflies, those are important factors.
Very much.
And the inhabitants that are there already. Is there any other, please, Mary Jo.
You mentioned that Mr. G. is visiting a school right now that is a model. Could you get some information to Dr. Earl about some of these other facilities so that we can?
Absolutely. There's a fabulous.
It's so exciting, but there's so much here that it would be great to see what a finished product might look like. The other thing I just wanted to note for us as a board is, we had added to our policy a couple of years ago, in creating charter schools, that we would abide by the principles and standards issued by the National Association of Charter School Authorizers. And so I would suggest that as a board, we probably all take another look at that. And that might generate questions or answer questions. So...
One other thing, John G. has offered to do an in-service or training with the board about governance, about authorizing. So that would be, as we move further down, might be a good opportunity to learn more.
Sharon?
Along those lines, if you don't have a building, what are your ideas for the proximity to the grounds that are integral for you to take care of? And obviously, the start will need to be in Wauwatosa.
Yes, absolutely, in Wauwatosa. As far as exact location, we haven't explored those options yet. But the land will be used. In fact, even well before the facility's built, we plan to hold events out there and get people really familiar with the land and the forest and going out there often. So that will definitely be part of, wherever the students may be located, they'll be on the land often.
Okay. Well, I look forward to hearing more about it. And I'm not nervous yet. But I know that you'll be bringing back some more firm numbers and ideas. And obviously, your expertise in putting this all together has been instrumental.
We have a good team. And the other thing to note is that this is a planning grant, and it's a little bit like using a crystal ball to write some of this, that these are our best aspirations. And we'll also discover so many things over the next year together as we work on this. So we have the opportunity to continue to shape this. So it is a draft.
Wouldn't you believe that there, this is not an unknown piece of land. There's a lot of interest in what people know about this land.
Absolutely.
And they have a lot of interest in it.
And that's one of the reasons we're using a community engagement model, so people can continue to know about it and feel a part of it.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Croner?
One other quick question. Mrs. Mufti triggered in me. That this exists was negotiated at the state level, I think, a forestry education center. Are there state funds allocated for building that at all? Or are you completely raising private funds to do that?
I'm not sure of the answer to that. Mr. G. would be able to answer that definitely. But I believe that the facility funds are being raised. I'm not sure if state funds have been allocated towards a portion of the building. I can find that out and get back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any community comment on this? Any questions, ideas, suggestions? It's exciting. Please come back again soon and tell us, really, that we can be informed as it moves along, because it's wonderful for this community, for the children.
It will come back as often as you have.
Good.
Thank you.
You could expect in a couple of years, we'll have students here to tell you about it, too.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Dr. Earl, you are on the next item, too?
Policy 5540, and Officer Brown is here this evening, as well as Ms. Kuykelsi is going to share the reasons for the change and what the change would mean.
Thank you. At the beginning of the year, Officer Brown, along with several different members of the Wauwatosa Police Department and our secondary school administration, came and met with myself and Dr. Erdl and talked about our current policy, 5540, which is school governments, or schools and governmental agencies. And at that time, what they pointed out to us was that our policy that we had in place, that we adopted through Neola, was pretty generic and sometimes created some confusion as far as how the two systems operated together. And at times, there was actually some, I don't, the word conflict is a strong word, but not necess, the schools and the police officers weren't necessarily working as collaboratively as they actually do in Wauwatosa. So our policy didn't really match the spirit of our school collaboration. So we spent some time as a group and talked about how we might revise that policy. Myself and Officer Brown had met several times to go through the policy. We also had Mr. Chan at one of the meetings to give us kind of that legal lens. And what we have in front of you tonight is a draft of the revised policy. And I think one of the biggest changes is, in our generic policy that we had in place, there is no acknowledgement of school resource officers even existing. And obviously, in Wauwatosa, over the past several years, they've become a very important, valuable part of our school communities and school, school climates and school cultures. They're members of our school building. So we think that this new policy will provide some clarity for how those two organizations can work together and also really, really encompass how our school districts operate with our police officers. And I don't know if Doug wants to add anything else.
No, I think you summed it up pretty good, Therese, in that what we want is for what we're actually doing in the schools every day to match what the policy is. And I think that's, that's a good policy, if we're, if our actions and our policy mesh. And I think that's the policy that we have before you, we've worked on together, and we can use to successfully work together in the future.
Yes, Mrs. Mufti?
Thank you. I have a question on one of the additions, and it's about the non-school-related investigations and how that process works. I just want to understand a little bit more about the timing of notification with the investigation. Just understand a little bit more what, what happens there.
Well, what normally happens if another agency either wants to speak to a child or has a warrant to arrest a child, they contact either the school or the SRO. And normally, they contact the police department first. We had a recent case where Milwaukee wanted to come to our school to pick up a couple of kids. I talked to the principal, let him know what the request was. It was an arrest warrant, so they had an active warrant for a couple of our students. We arranged then to have those students quietly taken out of class, so it didn't cause a big stir or confusion, and notified the parents as soon as they were safely in custody and on their way. And the advantage to having the school and the principals work together is that we don't have then officers from another department coming in and telling our principals what, what they should do or how they should act. That, as SROs, I believe it's our job, responsibility to kind of be the intermediary between the administration and the outside agency, so that we can make things go as smoothly for our students as possible and cause them the least amount of embarrassment.
And then the same thing happens if this is a case in our own community, that the school has then contacted the administration, and then they work with the SRO as well?
Correct. Again, if it's our own agency, those officers will also contact the SRO. And then we will talk with the building administrator. In many cases, if they just want to interview a student, I'll actually work with the principal to find out what that student's schedule is, if there's lunch or study hall, or a time that the officer can come to school to talk with that student without interrupting their academic classes, then we can facilitate, facilitate that to work as well.
Thank you.
Other? Yes, Mr. Croner?
Thank you. I think I have two questions. The last paragraph on the first page says, "Whenever it has been determined that an agency has a legitimate purpose interviewing a student within the confines of the district, the principal or representative shall be present throughout the proceedings." When it says "an agency," does that mean someone, does that mean an agency other than the Wauwatosa Police? Or does that apply to the Wauwatosa Police interview as well?
It applies to any police agency, whether it's our police agency or an outside agency.
Okay. And my second question was to the paragraph above that, the second sentence, and I think it's up above as well. "Parents will be informed when their minor, minor child is interviewed." I just didn't understand. I have, I want to have a better understanding of legality of having a parent present or not parent, present when a decision to interview is made.
By, by legal standards, the, the child does not, it's not a necessity to have the parent present at either an interview or an interrogation. However, in a recent case by the Wisconsin Supreme Court, State versus Jurrell, if a student or a young person asks for their parent to be present, then we are required to attempt to make that happen. So while it's not a necessity by law, if the student asks for a parent, we will make every attempt to make that happen.
So when it says here, "Parents will be informed when their minor child is interviewed," that doesn't mean the same thing as before?
Correct. It does not mean the same thing as before. So we will inform a parent every time a child is interviewed. The timing will not necessarily be before.
What would the hindrance be, I guess, to you and the work that you do if we wanted to make sure parents were informed before their child were interviewed?
There are some cases, and there have been some cases recently, where two issues come up. Number one, it's sad to say, but once in a while, the parent is involved with the child in the crime. And two, there are cases where if we notify a parent before, we have angry parents coming to school, and we have a whole, we've created a whole other issue or a whole other problem. So the advantage to notifying them either during or after is that, number one, we have answers for them, because we'll probably have the investigation completed by then. And now we can call the parent and say, we had this situation occur at school, we interviewed several children, including yours, and as a result of this investigation, there's going to be some school consequences, and there's going to be some legal consequences if that's the case. So we're able to give them answers instead of calling them and saying, your child has been accused of this. And the parents usually have lots of questions that we can't answer because we aren't completed with the investigation. There's also been a couple instances in the last couple of years where a child has been accused of something where we've investigated and found out that the allegations were false. So I was able to call the parent. Instead of calling a parent before interviewing them and notifying them of these scary allegations, I was calling them afterwards and saying, we investigated this incident, and there's, there aren't going to be any consequences or ramifications. And we were able, through our investigation and interviews of students, to find out that these allegations weren't true. So again, we're having answers for the parents instead of causing them more anxiety.
In situations where, you know, immediate safety is not a concern, would it be unreasonable in your view to, or possible to have parents have a form on file saying, I would like to be notified before my child is interviewed? Is that something that can be done, or is that not a reasonable thing?
That would be up to you as a school district to decide. From a, from a legal standpoint, if, again, if we needed to interview a child or we're going to take them into custody, if that were the case, then we could actually take that student into custody and take them back to the station. So we wouldn't, that wouldn't be a legally binding paperwork towards our investigation, although you could, from a school district, do that for your purposes.
I think you, your questions, Mr. Croner, are kind of the questions that we had at the beginning of the year when we first came together as a group. And I think was different in Wauwatosa compared to having a police officer from the precinct come in to interview a student. Again, our SROs are a part of our buildings all day, every day. So stuff is rumbling in the halls, and Doug Brown, just like Mr. Clarko, just like Mr. Galen, may or may not be the first one to find out about that, just based on those daily interactions they have all day with students. So as we looked at the presence of an SRO and their presence in our buildings, it's real different than it is when you need to call in a police officer, or when a police officer comes in to decide to initiate an interview. So there's a lot of interactions that go on between just SROs and student, and student body, because they're there all day, every day.
I just wanted to say, I'm very, very happy with the way things are set up and the way things are working in the schools. I'm just thinking, as a parent, if my child's got in a situation, what would I want to have happen? I just want to explore what the various possibilities were. So I'm very happy with the work everyone's doing. I'm just, I know parents would be concerned if their child was involved in something, and whether they would or wouldn't be notified about interviews and things like that. I think this might be a natural response.
And I would echo, another thing to add to what Therese just said, in that there's, there's a lot of situations throughout the day where, and I can only speak to Wes, but I know this occurs at the other schools, too, where kids come to me for information first. It happened to me today. A student came up to me and gave me some information about another student who may have drugs. The first thing that I did was went to find one of the associate principals and told him, told Mr. Byers what, what information I got, and the two of us worked on it together. And that's a daily kind of occurrence of, if Mr. Byers would get information of something that he would think would be criminal, he would come to me. And if I get anything, I don't act alone unless it's an immediate safety situation, and there's no associate principal or principal in the building right away. But that we seek each other out and we work together.
Okay. So I see it's not, maybe not something that's, should or could be in the policy, but it's maybe more informational discussion parents could have with their children to let them know what they should or shouldn't do or think about in certain situations. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak to this subject? It gives us another opportunity to thank and recognize the SROs. I don't think we get enough chance to thank you, because you are a vital part of the education of the Wauwatosa School District. And I don't have to say it, but I will, we worked a while to get this in place. And every time you come, there's something more of value added to it. So we really appreciate what you are doing for this, young people of this community.
Thank you, Lois. And I would, I would just add, too, that I understand your concerns, Mr. Croner, but I think in my time as a police officer in the schools over the years and seeing the officers that we've picked to come in, we truly are kind of a cross-section between... we've picked to come in, we truly are kind of a cross-section between someone who works for the school district and someone who works as a police officer in that we all take our responsibility to value the rights of the students very seriously, and that we believe that the most important thing that they can do is be in school all day, and we do everything that we can to try to make that happen. Unfortunately, sometimes legal issues come up, and we have to balance those things. But all the school officers in Wauwatosa really do value the school community and try to be as least disruptive as possible.
Thank you.
Just for the record, Lois, I'm a terrible speller. I apologize.
Good. You come to spelling, you learn.
Thank you.
Dr. Erdl, conference attendance?
Sure. Mr. Drell's recently attended WASB conference, and he is going to share some of his learnings.
I'm going to share my learnings. One of the best things about going to this conference is I've been doing this for 11 months now. I'm trying to figure out exactly what it is school boards do and are supposed to do. And at the, and we can't legally meet up or talk. I mean, I talked to a guy, they got sued because their school board went to a bar after for a drink, and they figured they were doing some clandestine plan. I don't know what you guys all think we do, but I don't think there's that kind of stuff going on. So anyways, I attended four sessions. One was for teacher compensation systems, hiring transfers and layoffs, basics of bargaining under Act 10, and the grievance process and handling employees' complaints. And the most significant thing that came out of this is the language in the state law about bargaining states to meet and confer at a reasonable times in good faith with the intention of reaching an agreement. That said, if there's a bargaining unit, you're confined to the limits of the CPI. The bargaining unit really has no say on how that money is distributed. It's solely up to the discretion of the district at this time. So you open up negotiations, the district sends a proposal, they accept it, everybody goes on their merry way. They may or may not get any money to the base wage. That's solely up to the district. If they refuse, and at the district's discretion, they can say, "Oh, it's nice, so we're going to do it." They have no arbitration, no mediation, and no legal, there's no prohibit strikes. So the state were bargaining in good faith, I thought was a bit of a stretch, but that is the way it is. Now, the other significant thing is if there is no bargaining agreement unit, then there are no limits. I thought that made, that makes a big difference to me. If you try, if you, in other words, I think the state's driving at compensation packages that merit pay. There was, we had a lot of sessions on merit pay. They want the money to go to merit pay, not the base wage. So it's just something to think about. I thought it was a good thing to do. There was a lot, everybody I sat with was on a school board for 20 years. And they had a lot of stories. And I said, "I'm 11-month there," and they said, "Well, keep up the good work. It's okay."
Absolutely. Yeah.
So it was a good thing to do.
Michael?
When you say there's no limit, what?
You're not confined to the CPI. If there's no bargaining agreement, there's no confined amount of money that you can spend or use. You can do, you can get really creative if there's no bargaining unit. If there's a bargaining unit, they're punitive. That poor bargaining unit, I had a hard time believing I was in America, but that bargaining unit gets penalized. I think it's as simple as that. And that's all.
Do you have further questions, please, of Mr. Drell's?
Yes, Mr. Drell?
I would just like to thank you for attending.
Sure.
It's really helpful. And I'm sure you have tons and tons of handouts.
You want some?
I might.
I'll make some copies. I've got handouts.
Thank you.
Sure.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to question Mr. Drell's on his attendance and the information he gathered? Okay. Dr. Erdl?
The Wauwatosa Youth Commission will hold its annual mock school board meeting on Wednesday, March 28th at 7:00 PM in the boardroom, in this boardroom in the Fisher Building. More than 20 high school juniors will play the roles of the school board members and administrators in tackling some relevant issues that are going on in the school district. So every year, it's always an excellent event that students get very well-prepared and put on a good presentation for everybody and actually have some real spirited debate. And also, if there's a board member that would be willing and interested to come to the practice, Ms. Wayne Scott, when is?
February 21st.
March 21st at noon. Just let me know if you're interested.
It's good meeting, and you will be surprised at what the young people bring forth in decision-making. Adults are more than welcome to come, but they usually are not a part of the conversation. It is strictly for the young people, learning government. So please, watch the meeting times and that, and perhaps you can come right down here. I'd like to see the room packed. Is there any other item that needs to come before us? Is there any from the community that would like to speak to anyone, any item on the further comment on the superintendent's reports? Is there any other non-agenda item that you'd like to speak to? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
May we have discussion before we vote?
Sure.
I've thought about this, and I called Dr. Erdl to ask, and there's some agreement between us. To go into executive session on this, we need to walk a very fine line in executive session. The underlying substance is a decision by the board to grant retirement to two employees. And that is an action of the board. To reconsider that action, we would need some kind of motion procedurally to bring the matter back before the board. This is not such a motion. If we did have a motion to reconsider or to agenda an action to rescind, the topic of why we were taking that vote, the topic of why we were taking that vote would be a topic for open meeting because it would go to the performance of the management of the district, which is not within the exceptions of the open meeting statute. If such a motion passed, we would then be able to, if previously agended, move to go into executive session to discuss the circumstances of individual employees. As this item is agended, we could go into executive session to discuss the circumstances of these two employees, but we cannot discuss why we are discussing their circumstances or what we would do if we would do something about those circumstances. So very, you know, delicate position that we're taking to go into executive session the way this is, the way this has transpired. Because it is an action, a thing that's already been done by the board, it's not coming as a new item before us.
Dr. Erdl, do you wish to speak in any way?
No.
A motion has been made and seconded?
Excuse me, Mrs. Weber. I believe that for us to adjourn from a public meeting into an executive session, the entire statement needs to be read, including the basis for the executive session.
I'm going to do that after we adjourn. As a second, the next thing I will do is open, have a motion to go into executive session.
With all due respect, I believe that that must be done at the conclusion of this meeting. I believe that the statement as written and the agenda has to be read in its entirety.
Okay, we'll do. May I have a motion to adjourn the regular meeting and recome into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1 subsection E to discuss Wauwatosa Education Association or WA negotiations in pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 subsection 1 F to give, excuse me, that's separate, subsection 1 and subsection F to give preliminary consideration to specific personnel problems related to retirement of specific employees, which will include consideration of financial, social, and personal histories, which, if discussed in public, would likely have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such history or data. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Mr. Croner? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Drell's. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Weber, can I?
Sure.
Ask for clarification on Mr. Meyer's comments, please. Mr. Meyer, are you arguing to not go into executive session at this time?
I don't see what we have to talk about, other than to listen to the circumstances of these two employees. They've been granted retirement status. If we wish to talk whether there was a mistake made, I don't believe that's a topic for executive session because whether there was a mistake made, whether they do or don't have retirement benefits, is not a topic for executive session. It may be a topic for us to vote on whether we want to reopen the question of whether they should have retirement benefits. I know this is very nuanced, but we care about these things as a board, which is why I bring it up. So know that if we go into, if you're voting yes to go into executive session, you believe that we can keep our discussion narrowly tailored to the circumstances of these two employees and not proceed to the question of whether a mistake was made, nor to proceed to the question of what to do about it if there was a mistake. For two reasons. Some of those topics are not exceptions to the open meeting law. Procedurally, we didn't agenda this to go down that path, to reopen the underlying question of the retirement.
Yes, Mr. Croner?
Thank you. Mr. Meyer, is it fair to restate what you've said, that the determination of whether these employees get retirement was a contractual issue? And if a mistake was made in a contractual issue that we have to reconsider, that would be an open meetings discussion? That the reason that would go into an executive session is that talks about specific personal issues related to those employees, which are not necessarily a contractual issue?
May I respond? As, just as I'm seeing this, in all sincerity, if we do nothing, these employees will be If information has come to us claiming that there was a mistake, the idea of us examining the question of whether there was a mistake is to reopen the decision that they be granted retirement benefits. Whether there was a mistake in granting them benefits is a different question than discussing their personal circumstances that may have been affected by our mistake. So I separate that there's the conversation and the decision as to whether we made a mistake. That's the open question. If there was a mistake, and then we go to, now what will we do about it? Now we get, to my thinking, into the territory where we're talking about the consequences of our mistake and the effect on these individuals, and we consider their individual circumstances. But before we get there, we have to decide that we made a mistake because this is not a new, a thing that's coming to us new. It's a thing we have decided, called the roll and put it to rest. So procedurally, to bring it back to our table, we have to follow some process to do that. This is what happens when you go to a parliamentary procedure seminar that you learn these things. Sending board members to seminars is dangerous.
Yes, Mrs. Newfeld.
Can I ask a question? How did this item, the second item, come to us? Was it administration's recommendation that this be discussed?
Yes.
That's all I have for now?
Did you have your hand up?
I did. And I talked to Dr. Erdl about this as well, and my question was a little more specific to the exception to the open meetings law, but I guess it really is the same thing when you get down to it. The fact that if we want to talk about whether or not we need to revisit a previous decision we made, the previous vote we made, I don't understand how that would have an adverse effect on the reputation of the employees. To me, I think an appropriate thing to do at this time is to not go into executive session and to, if a board member wants to stand up, you know, to agenda a motion to rescind at the next meeting, that vote that we made, and then start over. It's just, it's really awkward the way it is right now. I'm going to have a hard time voting to go into executive session as it stands right now.
Mr. Croner?
Is it fair to summarize by saying, if we think we made an error on interpreting a contract, then we should describe the error that we made in public session, and that if we decide to revisit that issue and that involves discussing personal information about employee, then that aspect of it would be appropriate for executive session? Does that summarize your point?
Yes. Yes, the idea is a mistake by this board is an open meeting issue.
So I guess I would ask then, is it possible, under this agenda, to describe that mistake now publicly and then go into executive session? Or does that need to be an official agenda item at the next board meeting?
I may. We didn't agenda an open meeting discussion of our mistake or the claim that we made a mistake or the examination of whether we made a mistake. Therein is our problem.
Aaron?
It sounds to me like there's a little bit of confusion around the second executive session item, so I would like to offer an amendment. Following the regular meeting, the school board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85 sub 1 sub E to discuss Wauwatosa Education Association WA negotiations.
Do you have that, Mrs. Philanti?
Yeah, that's the first sentence.
I'm going to ask Mrs. Fee to listen closely so that we can, if she doesn't mind, please. We can have discussion on this now, correct? We will discuss the amendment.
There's a motion that has not been seconded.
Okay. Could we have a second, or is there a second to the motion or amendment that Mrs. Newfeld has put on the floor?
Second.
Okay. Now, Mrs. Fee, we can proceed, correct?
Discussion on the motion to amend.
Understood that we're going to be?
I don't understand the motion. Can you describe what we're wanting to achieve with the motion?
Let me explain.
Mindfully, we have two motions. We have a motion to go into executive session.
We have an amendment.
And then an amendment to the motion to go into executive session. So we're down to a second level from the original motion. This motion is a child of the previous motion.
We're discussing amendment.
It would be an amended motion to only go in?
It would be an amendment to the motion, correct?
It would, well, it's basically a motion to only go into executive session for the first topic.
Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Well, it's not a negotiation item. It's a mistake by the board.
No, 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 not the first item. The first item is not a negotiation item.
So which, where?
Put a period after negotiations and we're done.
Okay. So a period after negotiations.
We're done.
So the school board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to the statutes to discuss WA- So the school board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to the statutes to discuss WEA negotiations?
That's it.
And is this a, a cover for what we're really going to talk about?
No, there's a separate item.
No, there's, there's two items. One is negotiations, the other one is the other piece. And if we take that off, then we'll, I mean, we certainly can bring it back as a motion to rescind at the next board meeting and have the open session discussion on it.
So we won't talk about the retirement of these two employees?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Croner?
I'll just say, I support this motion. I mentioned this to someone earlier, this is open government week in Wisconsin. Public should know this board is very, very serious about following those rules. They should know that four board members can't even talk in the phone, on the phone in succession without violating open meetings laws, and this board is very serious about following that. And since there's a question about whether we should or shouldn't discuss a certain thing in executive session, I think it's prudent to go ahead and accept the motion and just discuss it at another time.
Further comment on the amendment? Mayor Joe?
Well, it, it leaves the issue of the retirement unaddressed, so. Okay, I guess that's really separate from, from the amendment, so.
We're discussing the amendments.
Yes, fine.
Any further comment? Mrs. Fee, we will now vote on the amendment.
Correct.
Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Newfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
And just to make sure that the record is clear, I would withdraw my earlier motion as written in the, in the document. I believe whoever seconded would have to withdraw their second as well.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you. So that motion's now off the table, and we are adjourned into executive session.
Oh, we haven't voted on the move to executive session yet. We voted on the amendment to the motion. It's nice to win one of these against you, Mrs. Fee.
You're right.
Ninety-nine to one.
Please, very gently, she is a valuable resource.
Ninety-nine to one.
Is there any further discussion? And then, otherwise, I am going to call for the roll call.
Okay.
Yes, excuse me, just a moment, please, yes.
And I don't know, Mrs. Fee, if you have Robert's Rules there, but is the procedure for the board to stand and announce an agenda item for the next meeting to rescind?
I don't know. Sorry.
Mike, you should remember this.
I, it's, there's rescission and then there's.
So we need to investigate that further before we?
I'm going to ask Mr. Chanon if he has any comment on this, please. And if you do not wish to answer, I respect that.
No, I'll come, I, I think the question is to whether or not, how it gets on the agenda is not one of Robert's Rules of Order because you can't make a motion on something that's not on this agenda. So I think that's something that would go through our standard practice of how Dr. Erdl and the board president put together a board agenda. And it is not a question of, of Robert's Rules of Order. Because while Robert's Rules of Order govern the way in which we do motions, we also have to comply with, with open meetings law. So I don't think we could start making those motions yet.
Does that help clarify some of the confusion at this time? I'll be honest, it doesn't for me. Just make it clear.
I think we need to just.
There's confusion right now, I think what the public must, we need to recognize. Yes, Mr. Deroz, you said?
I don't think it was the board's error, the vote. And if there was an error made, you guys got to bring it up on the agenda. We vote on the information we get. If the information we get's incorrect, there's the error, not the vote.
Correct.
So that's how we got to.
I will work with Mrs. Weber to have that on the next agenda.
So as we stand, there is no motion on the floor with respect to this, because we did not vote. And the vote, first, motion and second were withdrawn. So now we are in order to adjain, adjourn this meeting, correct? Because we don't have any other?
We voted on all that stuff.
We do have the motion on the table.
The motion to adjourn is on the table.
As amended now.
And perhaps to clarify, Mrs. Llande could read what the motion is currently on the table.
And the, I have, as Phil Croner then would have moved, the school board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes, section 19.85 subsection 1E to discuss Wauwautosa Education Association negotiations. And, um, Deroz seconded?
I think that was Sharon.
And Sharon?
Oh, I made the motion. Well, I made the amended motion.
No, this, we voted on the amendment. Now we go back to as amended. This is as amended, what I just read.
Yes.
And now we vote on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that was Phil.
Is that clear?
I'll keep voting, you just say, say the word. I don't know what you're doing exactly, but.
Okay. The motion is on the floor, seconded, roll call.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Deroz?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Newfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
And Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
We stand adjourned.
All right.